Dolly's absent, Albertson. We have a quorum.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. I'll need a motion in a second.
Are we going to modify the agenda?
Oh, I'm sorry. I need to take, item two D, two D is off. They're going to make some modifications to their preliminary plan. So today, what we'll do is we'll do the public hearing, item B, the annexation, and item C, the zoning. So on the agenda, we will remove two D, that it.
Yep.
That, I'll need a motion in a second to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Motion by Mr. Stonebarger.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Johnson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Item number two, Eastwoods Eighteenth Edition, the annexation and zoning, and go ahead, Jeff.
Okay. Originally, the petitioners had petitioned to do a preliminary plan of this whole red area, but since the preliminary plan is not happening today, they still want to move forward with annexing and zoning this black shaded area. They're requesting to annex it and zone it R1, single-family residential. The property is adjacent to city limits, and the lots would be able to conform to the R1 size. If we do annex this portion in, one of the issues we had at the preliminary plan is that they needed to, for international fire safety rules, they had to connect 12th Avenue to 10th Avenue to allow fire trucks two ways in and out. So if this does get annexed in, they would still probably have to do that temporary access road just to allow for ingress and egress. But with that, I'll leave it to you guys and try to answer any questions you may have.
Jeff, that would show up in the preliminary plan when we did that, though, right? The road?
Yeah.
They wouldn't deal with that today?
Excuse me, Jeff. The one question I had is, this spot right here, can it be platted administratively, or does it have to come back before us? I think that's what Dennis is getting at. Is it, will they preliminary, use a preliminary plan, or can it be platted administratively?
It would have to come back for a preliminary plan because it would require streets and other improvements, and whenever a plat requires improvements, our ordinance says that it needs to be preliminary planned or come before you guys.
That answer it?
Yep.
With that, I'll open the public hearing if anyone's here to speak on behalf or against the annexation in the zoning. I have one question. From a larger zoning portion, in the old preliminary plan, which will change because of some land acquisition issues, the park dedication.
On the old plan, they were showing park dedication approximately here where my cursor is. That was part of a later phase, but now that the preliminary plan's off the table, for at least now, don't know for sure when that phase may or may not be.
Okay, so we had, we brought in the Stony Point. We approved the plats and a preliminary plan there. And when we asked about park dedication, they said their opinion was it was either done at annexation or plating. And their interpretation of that was it wasn't done in annexation, so I don't have to do it at plating. In a perfect world for the park board, they would like to dedicate that park when the area is annexed, under the assumption that a large area, a quarter, is being annexed at a time, but we don't annex a quarter at a time. What happens with the park dedications on a larger scale when we annex in such a small postage stamp piece?
Well, our code says that either it has to be, well, 5% of the land that's being annexed needs to have park dedication. So I mean, we could do, go about it, you know, get 5% of this land, or, you know, I guess...
We could also put, in this case, because we're not going to dedicate it at annexation, that it will be dedicated at the preliminary plan stage. That'd be safe enough?
I was going to suggest that we modify the resolution to say that the...
With park dedication at the time of plating?
Preliminary plan.
Preliminary plan. That way, we don't, there is no question that nothing is, there's no one's opinion as to whether something slipped through the...
Right.
Why don't we annex the whole thing in?
We only annex what we're being requested to annex. That would be the city forcing its will upon a landowner, and we normally wouldn't force anybody.
But I mean, in a perfect world, the park board would like to know
Right.
if we're going to put a park on that section of land. We'd like to take a look at more than just the hashed area.
Right.
And say, well, you know...
Really, their preliminary plan should include as much as, you know, the remaining quarter section as they own, and the city might want to, like we did with the Mac Estate addition, do some planning of your owner, of our owner.
That's what I say. It'd be nice if you look and say, well, based on where the roads are going to go through, we think the park should be in the northeast corner. And then that is part of it.
Right, and look at the whole quarter. And actually, I'm going to try and set up a date for the park board to take a field trip and look at some of these areas that are proposed for parks. Just, you know, actually look at them in the field.
Any chance we can get the trolley?
Literally, it's a field. So, you know, they have a better idea of...
I think it's better, I think it's better planning for those quarters, those larger areas, to say, you know what, don't worry about the park dedication here. We're going to put it over there. The only question's going to be what phase is that park dedication in? We don't want the entire area to be developed in the park last.
That's next to a road that might not go for 50 years. And the park board has to take that into consideration.
All right, so with this, we'll want to make a note in the annexation that park dedication will come at plating, so there's no miscommunication.
Will come at preliminary plan.
Preliminary plan, I'm sorry. So we all know. Anyone here to speak on behalf or against plating? Oh, come on up, state your name and, for the record. You've got to be near the microphone, so it's recorded, and you get to be on TV.
I'm Connie Johnson, and I was invited to this meeting because our property is just above the red line up there. And I just want to say, I appreciate all you guys are doing. We have no problems with what's going on to the bottom of the red line. But as planners as a whole, I guess I want to share some concerns or issues maybe we have as property owners around that area. So, actually, I have a little handout for you, and I'm just going to let you pass it down the road. If you just want to pass those down, that would be great. We've lived there for about, we've had that property, our property, for about 20 years. And honestly, we're enjoying the neighbors. It's great to have development in the city. That's not an issue.
One of your handouts right here, so everyone can see it.
Let me grab one.
Thank you.
So, I'm not coming here angry. I'm not coming here super upset or anything, but I do think there are some concerns and issues that maybe we need to address. If you look at this handout that I have here, I just want to make a note that those pictures at the bottom were taken yesterday. And I think we need, the number one thing that I have on there is that the greenway to the north of Cherry Drive always has standing water. And that would be these two pictures here. This is new, this area right here is new, newly developed as of last year. And I can say that as living there, or having that land for 20 years, we have never had standing water continually, year, or day after day after day. There used to be water in some, a lower area to the east of there, but it would dry up. This never dries up. And honestly, if I owned that property to the south of that, I'd be really upset. First of all, it's a safety concern. I know that family there has toddlers. That water's deep enough that a child could drown in there. That would make me unhappy. I find it a futile effort to spray for mosquitoes when we have that running through town. That's, doesn't make sense to me. You know, I can't help but think, water runs downhill. Something's not right there. It somehow needs to be corrected. And I'm not the only one who thinks that. I know there are several. A lot of people up there. That's not what was intended. I remember when that was brought into the city, and it was listed as a greenway.
Jeff, can you pull, can you back, pull up an aerial map so we can back up? What we have in front of us doesn't have Cherry Drive on it.
Oh, okay. It, when that land was brought in as a greenway, it was, that was all developed after the flood of 97. And so that was supposed to be the floodway for if we had another flood, the water would run through there. I don't think it was ever intended to hold water or...
Can you point out where you're talking about on, we see where Cherry Drive is there?
Cherry Drive, Cherry Drive is right here. So this is this, this is right back here. This is this greenway that comes right back here. This is, this is our property right here. This is, I can tell you, living there for so long, our road used to go this way, there used to be a culvert here, there used to be a hole here. It used to be a ditch, a hole. I would consider it a slough. That slough would dry up. And, I mean, we've had two pretty dry years. This is still not dry. As of yesterday, we had water there. It's, there always is water in there. And I just think that that isn't what it was intended to be. It wasn't the intended purpose of that greenway in there. So I'm just asking you, I know that you put plans into place, but maybe some follow-up on that, if you could help the citizens in that area up there figure out, how do we get that improved a little bit, so? Because it's new, it's, it'll be interesting to see what happens this summer, but honestly, it's been dry. And I'm not sure what's going to happen, but... And again, if I were any of these people that owned lots there and had toddlers or children or anybody come to visit me, I'd panic if there's much water in there.
Thank you.
So...
Connie, if I may, I'd like to address just a little bit of that because I know that there is an issue up there where the waterway was there for years and years and years. And I think what's happened, you're absolutely right. It didn't hold water for a long time, but we have all these homes up there now that are in that shallow, you know, with the high water coming up, and every one of them are pumping water out. There has to be a solution. I know I'm getting emails from a gal. I forget her name right off.
Probably the name of the...
Right on the corner up there. And she is struggling with water there, and it sits there. Whether we have to tile that and put the sump pumps in there to get the water out is one of the ideas that the engineering department is looking at. But I do know that they're looking at two, three different items, different ways that we can move the water. It's bad. I understand that.
I hope we can, and I will say, though, again, living up there and walking the streets and being out and about quite a bit, this area over here that's been developed, I can tell you, it's not sump pumps that's making that water go there. I walked there when the snow melted, the ice, the frost came out of the ground, the snow melted, the water's running from this field here. It's going down here, it's going across here, it was crossing the road. That road was just water. And it, there's not enough sump pumps up there. People didn't have their sump pumps running out there. So the water was just a natural drain coming off this field, off this way, and down, down into that.
And right now, those sump pumps are probably still in the drains, aren't they? Or the outside now? Sarah, just for a point of, the area, the area that we're zoning and planning today is south of there, but while that's up there, can you explain, Sarah, between Sarah and Jeff, we can see the natural drainage way there across the street or where that water's being held. It looks like it's one lot. Is it, is it a public lot, or is it a private lot, and it's just not been platted?
No, that's, the place that she's talking about that holds water is land that the city purchased for drainage.
Okay.
And...
Is it, is it in a stage of being, I mean, as you look at this, it looks like that drainage is all supposed to run down to the bottom of the screen, but somewhere up there, it's not. When we do our preliminary plans, we ask for a drainage plan.
Right, and it wasn't supposed upon there. I mean, that, the calculation showed a steady drop of the level of the ground from the pipe outlet down, but it's pretty flat.
And that's part of, it's part of the preliminary plan is when we ask it, why those drainage plans are so important, that we do look at the elevations to make sure that it is going to drain
Right.
the way it's supposed to.
Right.
So Sarah, do you think that could be, can that be tiled, like Steve said?
Well, it could be tiled, and it's...
Be tiled, so that part is...
Can you turn on the wetland map? The part of the problem is, this is a wetland, and it's been designated a wetland. You see where the water ponds, it was designated a wetland before this ever developed. And the Corps of Engineers has looked at this, and we can dry it up. We, it's, wetlands are protected, but that doesn't mean you can't develop around them. We would have to mitigate. But there's a couple of different things that you could do to change that. And the fact of the matter is, development did change it. They had equipment in that channel, and the equipment left the land lower where the water ponds, then downstream, so the water can't flow. And there's just not very much grade in the whole thing, where you can make it be a steady grade. But I know the engineer's here, and he had the contractor out there trying to regrade and make it drain. And it's, it's not the same having soil and vegetation needs a greater slope than, you can't control it as well as you could pavement or concrete, that sort of thing. So it is an issue. We know it was a wetland. The water that she's talking about draining to it is also a wetland. And this isn't new information. This information we've had for decades. We know it's wet. And when you develop in wetland areas, these are the kind of problems you can expect. And it only exacerbates it when everyone wants to have a basement, and the basement's pumped 24/7. They don't stop. It isn't just when there's a rainstorm. There's a trickle of water. And every place we have ditches downstream from areas that have sumps, we have these kind of problems, and we get calls all the time for, that's why we're doing 19th Street. We're putting underground drains there. We've had nothing but complaints about those ditches from the moment they went in because people drain their sumps to them, they never dry up. And, you know, it used to be, when it would rain, the water would flow through it, and then it would dry up. But when you pave and you change the natural ground, that doesn't happen anymore. And we've done that out there. We've put buildings, we've put roads, and we've changed the natural regime that's out there. So this is what we get.
Thank you.
But I do think that we will be addressing those water issues. I know we're looking at them now and see if there's something that we can get done for them.
Thank you. It's nice for us as a plan commission to be able to see the tail end of a development like that, where we can look and see, we said it was going to drain this way, did it drain this way? But there's a lot of other factors that change every day. Things that are in our control and things that are not in our control. Robbie, you had something to say?
Hi, Pat. Rob Peterson. Just real quick, I don't actually have a joining land. I'm up here across the road to the north. But a few years ago, the culvert on 14th actually collapsed, which created a lot of water north of that road and problems for us. And so now that that culvert's been taken out because of this new pavement here, that is creating a lot of concern for us north of the road because we're not sure where that water is going to go now. It's supposed to go into the storm sewer, but we don't know if that'll actually happen the way it was planned and developed. And so all of this, where this water did run, we're concerned about where that's going to go in a wet year. And so I don't, I don't think, I'm with Connie. I don't think anybody's really truly upset about it. We're just saying, hey, we want you to be aware of it and look at it and plan accordingly because, you know, we did see, like Sarah was talking about, the equipment in here. This probably is deeper today than it ever was before, and that's probably why it doesn't flow out now. And so maybe there's some things that can happen there to help that in the future. But we're just asking you to look at these things when you're planning for these annexations and these developments so that, you know, we understand where the water's going to go and what it's going to react to once we develop it because there are a lot of concerns for those of us in this area.
And I know there's just as many concerns to the people downstream, too, where there's more water running through their stuff than it ever been before. It's always, it's always a trick to get the water from one place, either want it or don't. And there's nothing in between with water. Just for the record, north of 14th, that's county? Still county? Okay, well, thank you.
Okay, so let me go on to my list here, just quickly, though, because these won't take very long. Number two I just had is construction trash. It seems to me that we have ordinances in place. We have a lot of good things for the city, but it would be really nice to maybe address some of these issues. There's a lot of trash up there. Dumpsters aren't covered, and I don't know if those big construction dumpsters need to be covered. We had one sitting there for a year in one driveway, just open all the time. And I've picked up a lot of big pieces of trash, plastic, cardboard, whatever it may be. And I know that's part of construction. If it moves further east, it's going to be somebody else's issue and not mine. But it looks bad. Don Robey last year went to bat for us and got a lot of those guys to clean up stuff, but it's back again. I don't know if, when people are taking out building permits, if there's something that can be done to help get some of that trash picked up or not blow around. Some contractors aren't as messy as others. It's, it's just reoccurring, just something to be aware of.
See, Connie, I think that we could actually add that job description to Tim's over here, Tim Ollm. Tim is our building inspector. He goes to those construction sites. He sees those construction sites. And that probably hasn't been something that you've looked at. Is it, Tim?
That should come at the time, at the time of permitting. That's, that's the, that's the responsibility of the contractor and the property owner, isn't it? For all of that?
But that wouldn't be so hard for you to say, you know, you guys got to clean this up, and you got to do this.
Well, if you, if you look at the bottom two pictures on there, or three, one is a utility box. It's had plastic wrapped around it all winter, blowing around. The second one is a little harder to see, but that's south of us, and it's a pile of asphalt, concrete junk from when they extended a road. That never disappeared. That's been there probably a couple of years. And the other one was a picture of a nail in the road. And as I stated on number four, I bet we've had five tires repaired this year because we've had screws or nails in our tires from driving the roads up there. So it's just some, you know, and I've gone for a walk, and I've found a pile of nails or screws laying in the road. It's just common courtesy to kind of pick up a little bit, is all I'm saying, so. Those are kind of it.
With the pile of...
Can I have one second, one second there? Tim, when you issue the, or when the building permits, and it might be for Ken, who's not here, is there a set of standards that the property owner and contractor required to uphold of any sort? I always look back and go, most of this has nothing to do with zoning. But what it does have to do is with how things are done and what kind of standards are set. And we always look back and go, well, is there, is there an ordinance in place? How do you enforce it? Is it being enforced? My question is, is there any ordinances or standards that are in place? And if they are, why aren't we enforcing them? Or should we put standards in place that go with these building permits that are enforceable? When you guys have your next staff meeting, can you put a note on there and maybe visit about that? Something that we can do, because I understand, I mean, we've got, you take a look from the junior high school to the 14th, 19th intersection, that's 20 years of development. It's nothing like it happens overnight. If you happen to live in that area, across from that area, you get to deal with that your entire adult life. Some people probably don't want to do that. But I think we could possibly, in-house, staff-wise, decide where the, where it's falling down at and see what we can do to...
And Connie, I really appreciate your comments because that's so true. We're not working there. We're working south of the lake now. But we've tried to keep our dumpsters closed, and I've talked to my guys, and I've walked that South Lake Drive and picked up garbage. It seems like every other day, if you don't keep them covered. And you get a wind like we had yesterday, and we have so much plastic and cardboard that comes out with materials now. You get a wind like we had yesterday, you nearly empty that dumpster, and it's...
And some of it you can't help, and I recognize...
Half a mile all the way around, so...
It's construction, it's progress. I recognize that. But I think there are some probably simple things that would be helpful.
That's a good reminder.
You bet.
You know, and I'm going to say with those big piles of concrete or dirt, you can't mow them. So about July and August, they're full of weeds, and that doesn't look good either. And I guess I think I heard so much last year about the, I think it was Watertown 2020 and the beautification committee. This is so counter to that. It doesn't make sense to me, you know. I think if you're going to have a committee that's working towards progress of that, let's do it in some of these simple areas, too, so. And number five, just let me draw your attention. I don't know if you've driven the roads up there. If the roads have been there more than a year, they're wavy. And I, it would be, that doesn't seem the norm to me, so. That's beyond my control, beyond my knowledge.
I would like to address that, though, Connie, because Sarah and I have had that discussion on those roads, and they're horrible because you're like that. I understand that. One of the things I think we should do is we should really step back in time, whereas you could not put asphalt on top of that road for at least a year. Let it sit there, let it settle down, and after that one year of settling, then I think you need to put that top coat on. I know we would have gravel there for a year, but it would be beneficial for the city. It really would for our roads because they're horrible.
Yeah, they are bad up there, and it's, lots of the surrounding roads. It seems like it should be done right from the start, whatever. It would probably save money, so. Anyway, and number six and seven, I guess I'm just going to mention quickly. Mowing, again, I don't feel like, I feel like we have ordinances in place. It's not my job to police that or call up somebody every time something needs to be mowed and say, oh, these weeds are three feet tall. And when I do, I don't feel like I should have somebody call me back and say, who owns that lot? Who should I be calling? It's not my job. And I don't, I just think, I don't, I don't want to be the policeman up there. I don't want to be the crabby lady that lives up there reporting on things. I love living up there, and I love the neighbors, and I don't, you know. Number seven is the same way. Brand-new house that's built too close to our lot, and I think, oh, my goodness. Why do I have to be the one to discover that? I've already probably made a neighbor not happy with me, and that's not my intention, so. Anyway, those are my, some of my concerns. I just would, I guess what I'm saying is, help us out a little bit, maybe some follow-up. You're doing a good job of planning things, and I'm glad the city is progressing, and I like the neighbors and all that. There are some simple things, just courtesy, I think we could maybe help people. And again, I don't want to be the policeman up there that, that crappy old lady.
Thank you.
We do have a staff meeting tomorrow morning at, what, a quarter after eight, Tim? I would, I would ask you to bring these up to that meeting so we can have that further discussion.
Just to find out what's enforceable, what's already on the books, and what we don't because some of those areas, and we're starting to see the building pick up again. Kind of bummer if you're adjacent to that for 20 years. Okay, thanks. Anyone else speak in the open? Seeing none, I'll close the open. Ask for, we're going to take this in two parts. The first part is Resolution 2015-10. That's the annexation of the property just hashed out on your diagram or grayed out on our sheet. So the annexation is just the hashed area. Ask for a motion in a second.
I'll move.
Motion by Mr. Arnold.
I'll second it, but is that included?
Second by Mr. Stonebarger. Uh... Yeah.
Well, in the discussion with the board...
Let me turn this back on. In a discussion with the board, yes, I would say, to answer your question first, John, yes, I think that should be included. I think what was really helpful for us was in that area north of 14th Avenue, when we could see that whole quarter of land that was not annexed into the city yet. But yet, we can see how the roads and the streets are going to be laid in there, so it all ties together. And if we could do that, encourage the developer here to, it doesn't have to be annexed in, I think, to take a look at what are they going to do with all that area to the east? But if that could be considered at some point, and I'm not sure why the preliminary plan was pulled off the agenda today, but maybe that's what they're working on right now. I'm not sure, but...
I think that's...
And that's fine.
Yeah.
That's just a comment I'm making, and I'm all in favor of annex it in and zoning it accordingly. I just think it would be really nice to see more of a comprehensive plan of the area around it so it all ties together.
Dennis, I just want you to know, the reason that was pulled off is I'm actually working very closely with the landowner to the south so we can get some things squared away on the 7th Avenue and try to work that out. That'll be a meeting Wednesday night, so that's why it was pulled off.
Okay, thank you. So I have a motion by Mr. Arnold, second by Mr. Stonebarger to annex the property to include the verbiage that the park dedication will occur at the time of preliminary plan. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries.
I'd probably get sick of hearing me, but I did want to address what you mentioned with that, with the Mac Estates, with the preliminary that was put up. That was something that Sarah and Jeff did in the office on their own just to give you guys an idea of what could come in the future. you guys an idea of what could come in the future. It's not that those roads will specifically be in that, that spot, you know, because the gentleman that's up there is not a developer, he's not a person that's going to be putting in those homes, but just to give you guys a heads up, she went ahead and did it. And I think that was very, a very positive thing for us and hopefully we will do that in the future.
Thanks. Next item on the agenda is Resolution 2015-11, the zoning of the same hashed property, their recommendation is an R1, R1 zone. It looks at this time, everything around it is either R1 or undeveloped. Need a motion in a second for discussion.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Lawrence.
Second.
Second by Mr. McGuire. Any discussion on zoning? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. 2D was withdrawn. Any old business, Jeff?
I have no that isn't.
No new business? No executive, any motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Lawrence, second by Mr. McGuire.